At this point, I would like to reopen the previously recessed Finance Committee meeting. And Madam Clark, if you would please read the first item on the agenda. I can read that right here. It's Counselor 2017-061, which is appropriation fiscal 2018 general budget amendment to traffic parking and lighting. And Chair, I recognize this Counselor Finn on the board.
Again, Mr. Chairman, this really is not appropriately before the body. This should be a separate order as an amendment. And it puts us in the unfortunate situation of discussing within committee a matter that's not written technically before us. And so I don't see how we can proceed unless this is even.
Is that your, like, you're going to include it?
No, no.
No, that's my conclusion. I believe it is a point of order, like, Chair Fine, Squid, me, I think.
Yep, I know you are correct. It should have came in on the agenda. Thank you for catching it early this evening. And with that, just to, because obviously this is Counselor Fine himself on the time frame, we can verify this procedurally. Continue with the discussion on the traffic parking lighting budget. It would just be less the amendment come out. So, Madam Clark, if you could tell us what that amount would be, please.
The amended amount for the traffic parking and fire alarm and lighting is $191,233.27.
So, total budget if approved, plus that amount would be?
So, the total budget that was originally brought before the council was $299,431,036.37. That amount did not include the $191,233.27.
So, with that, there was some requests for additional information at our last hearing. We made this particular budget. Counselors, you have that in your possession. I would invite, I think, to our reference, traffic parking, to the podium. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Counselors.
Do we have that for us? Sorry. What is that, the business plan?
Yeah.
Oh, it's distributed electronically.
I don't put everything else in.
Thank God I have one on my back. Michael, proceed early. Excuse me, I just want to make sure that I articulate that clearly. You understand what we've been debating, what was deliberated about around the original budget that's presented. Any questions for Mr. Coffey? Is a motion on the board to approve the budget? Is that true?
Question, I'm saying. There is a question, please, on the board.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Coffey, thanks for putting this together. I think, I mean, this looks like a to-do list, right? Like, this is a sort of itemized list of things. You know, I was much more interested in learning a little more deeply about how things are going to get done, when things are going to get done, additional figures we might need. Instead, also, we were presented with an increased amendment budget, which we're not going to be discussing tonight, but I have no idea, you know, how that fits into this solution. If you want to go back, what yield does this? Where did this come from? And how did you go about?
Is that the goals and objectives?
This is your goals and objectives.
Well, what yielded it is, you know, bottom line, and I had most of it. I learned my habit and stuff, and I quickly began to answer your questions and answers.
Okay. All right. Well, I'm not going to hold things up, but I don't, I don't know if I'm going to be voting in favor of it, but I still am very much curious, especially if we have some considerable parking issues that are coming down the pipe, like the T, Taddy Bridge shut down, Quincy Center, or who's in all the Hancock stuff. So, you know, I'm very, those are top of mind and top importance for me to get fixed. So, I, I don't know. I have a strong feeling that this will go forward anyway tonight with this council. But, I don't know, I'll be very much on you to try to move these things forward. So, thanks for putting this together. It has been very, very recent, but I do expect a lot of it.
Further discussion on the motion for Mr. Coffey, for, I actually call it all, like, I just want to, you know, clearly I articulate, you know, and I feel like I have, and I feel like I can affirm, you know, this is what I'm hearing, right? It's what I hear from folks when I'm in the supermarket, when I'm in the mall, when I'm with my wife, when I park with, you know, my child, it's a real problem that we're dealing with. You raised your hand a year ago, said, "I'm the guy, I'm going to fix it." I would just, you know, I read through the business plan. I think there's definitely room for improvement, is my own opinion. I don't want to be overly critical, but I don't know how much we've really moved along here. We don't. I think there's a tremendous amount where I'd love to do. I know that I was traveling last week with my day job and was not available. There was a, there's a, there's a very spirited dialogue taking place on the Pennsyl right now. As we speak, the guy with the ETA situation, that's very, we able to tune in to that meeting?
I was very happy that it was a split, very happy. I also wanted those that don't want it.
So, you were at that meeting last week?
No, it was not, but I'm happy that.
Okay. That's something you're really going to want to key in on, like, laser focus. We got to get this stuff right, you know, and I hear the sentiment expressed here, you know, on the back end, that traffic studies, it's over. I hear folks, you know, pretty curtly explain to me that, you know, the traffic department wants feedback on the solution. Have them meet me at such-and-such intersection at such-and-such time. I know that sometimes that, you know, may sound a little curtly. I see tremendous value in connecting with the residents, because I could tell you everything that happens on my street. And as a ward council, I rely on people in the neighborhoods to tell me, you know, what are the issues that you're facing with, some of which include traffic and parking. So, I'm not sure what your overall outreach approach is going to be. But if you ask, and I'm sure you have different thoughts, if you ask, then you probably, you know, like I said, I think the department has a lot of room for improvement, you know, I don't know really. Like, we've made a huge stride in here, I don't feel that. So, with my comments. Any further discussion on the motion? Counselor Devon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, you know, this amendment to reallocate some funding for some, I guess, is, can you elaborate a little bit on what's going on?
No, I'm happy.
Okay, it's no amendment, okay. Just to elaborate a little bit more on the fact that I'm talking to a lot of folks in the city of Quincy on this comprehensive traffic and parking study. And I'm getting, you talked about 50/50. It kind of brought me about where I'm getting 50% of people that say, "We should do this traffic study and parking." And then I got the other 50 saying, 50% saying, "Why don't we just fund some items and just tackle the traffic and parking situation?" So, I'm giving a split on everybody talking about half stand, would you do the study and find out what's it going to take to do the mitigation, to do the different design work, to do the different areas? But then there's another group of people that are saying, "Wait a minute, that's not the way to go. Let's go the other way. Let's put more funding into the budget, get more positions involved, and just tackle it right away." Where do you kind of see that? Because I can see both angles. I see both sides of the coin here. And the folks that want and need to proceed and ask those questions to you. So, the folks that asked me to say this, I'm going to ask you, where do you think we should go? Should we continue this comprehensive traffic and parking study that's going to come down the line down the road? Or should we start allocating and tackling it today?
No, I believe we should have proceeded that, but I do believe we should have helped debate it, but, because I've heard the same thing. Counselor, we just allocated that to some things that are happening. You know, part of the initial basis of the study, it's really what the program, we have program in this study, is to qualify as a state fund later, and success in that, and right in the half of that, we qualify this to, so, much as.
So, we're looking to tap into some federal and state funding to allocate for the traffic and parking study? Are we looking and investigating into that? Can I ask the mayor's representative, if I could, through you, the chair, if we're looking to go that way? I'm sorry to bring this up now, but I've got a lot of questions about this, and I think it's the right appropriate time to speak about it. If I could.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Certainly, Counselor, any avenue that's available for state and federal funding, we'd be happy to pursue. I think that the point Mr. Coffey is making is that the first step of the coach plan would be for the firm to do the work necessary for us to qualify as a various programs that would produce some federal and state funding, you know, that was sort of his key plan more importantly. And again, I understand that's not before the body tonight, so I don't want to go too far down the road. Certainly, I have a discussion on what's going forward, but if Mr. Coffey will, the first step that we had anticipated in that Traffic Master Plan were some of the complete streets, complete streets qualification, and they're going to want to vote into their. I don't have a legal issue on this, we won't have to pay to discuss it. But those could be things that we could do. They're not, we'll see what, how the process plays out, but I would just say that what Mr. Coffey was referring to is stuff to qualify as for federal state money.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. I just wanted to elaborate with that, with the four bridge down in One Lane at this point, they're going to be getting back to Two Lanes over like September, October. Then we have the walls and key station situation. I just want to make sure that we're in the timing phase of making sure we're tackling this traffic and parking situation. It's a very important matter. It's one of the top things that I hear about as I'm available, well, in the public. Continuously, people are available. I do my office hours outside, you know, and people are coming up to me, approaching me, and asking me these questions. And I say, "You know what? I'll ask that question and I get to the council." And that's what I'm going to continue to do, is facilitate that language from the constituents, from the voters. And I'm going to spit it right back out here and ask those questions. So, we just want to all be moving in the right direction attacking this, because it's a quiet item that, with the population growing and redevelopment that we're having in the city of Quincy, we have to continue, continuously talk about this and find ways to deal with that. So, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Mr. Coffey, thank you, Mr. Walker.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Madam Clark, please call it all.
Counselor King?
No.
Counselor Devon?
Yes.
Counselor Finn?
No.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Counselor Hughes?
Yes.
Counselor Forrest?
Yes.
Counselor Leanne?
No.
Counselor Kamuchi?
Chairman Paul?
Yes.
Page five, just to read. All right, so that concludes the deliberation on the fiscal year budget. Final vote on the overall budget, we're looking at a dollar denomination, $299,418,741.37. That's the final number, plus all cuts that we made here in committee, and it's the motion. Motion made by all the hours to approve the discussion on that motion. Seeing none, except my concierge. Seeing none, Madam Clark, you please call it all.
Counselor King?
Yes.
Counselor Forrest?
Yes.
Counselor Finn?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Counselor Hughes?
Yes.
Counselor Forrest?
Yes.
Counselor Leanne?
Yes.
Counselor Kamuchi?
Chairman Paul?
Yes.
That concludes the first section of this evening's meeting regarding the budget. We will approach these items once we have the reports or committees at the end of, I guess, the council meeting. So, the next item on the agenda is appropriation, excuse me, Counselor 2017-073, which is an appropriation from Coffee Acquisition, $80 million for Quincy Center downtown improvement program. We're joined there by Consigliere, which is going to walk us through a presentation, and just so counselors know, we can level set this, there will be an additional meeting scheduled. We can, we'll talk about it, scheduling additional meetings from next week, Thursday, the 15th, and I'll explain why. Hope it all further, Bill Mier.
Thank you very much, Counselor, and to the members of the council. We know you have a pressing schedule for the fiscal year. We appreciate the opportunity to present to you really what is a critical component to the advancement of the downtown revitalization process. In the year and a half that I served as the mayor's special counsel for downtown development, this probably was the most important matter that I've had the opportunity to present to you. Indeed, virtually all the preceding matters were precursors to this, and this is a predecessor to anything else that is going to come. The presentation this evening will augment a book that was provided to the council on May 15th. We also have provided a, hopefully, in high coffee, to members of the council, an outline for this evening, and a slide presentation that you'll see on your monitors, and you should also have higher copies. The outline is for us to present to the council the substantiated documentation as to the ability of the district improvement farm commonly known as the DIF fund to support the appropriation that we are requesting from the council to allow us to proceed with the numerous public improvement components that are necessary to advance the private development that in these two instances, the council was already approved, and in fourth one of the instances, we will be requesting the council to approve. We will use, see a slide presentation by Mr. Craig Seymour, the financial consultant and expert on the DIF as to the capacity of the DIF to finance the public improvements that are embodied within the DIF request. We will also see a presentation by Mr. Jeff Fasson, who has been the urban planner for this entire process, going back to streetworks. He's been involved in virtually every iteration of the plan over the course of the last decade. And we are hoping that in that presentation, it will allow you to visualize and connect the interactive components of the public improvements to the prospective private developments that they will support. And combined with Mr. Rob Stevens, deputy development director, will, along with the invitation from myself, describe the various line items that are included in the $80 million requested for you. Now, $80 million is a significant sum of money under any circumstances. And it's the most significant sum of money that the administration has requested to support the advancement of the downtown. However, if you receive from Mr. Seymour's presentation, it is pretty much in line with the budget that had been projected by various consultants over the course of the last 10 years for us to advance this project at this stage of its development. And it's also consistent, and Mr. Seymour will demonstrate, that the prior appropriations by this council, by this body, $40 million on the first instance for the major public improvements that were made to construct the Cannon Parkway, also known as Pond Course, and the relocation of Town Brook, and numerous other public components. And the amount of $40 million was more than matched by federal and state funds thereafter. And I think that's an important fact for council to take note of, because we are still in play, if you will, as we move forward, seeking this amount of money for additional appropriations, additional match, matches by federal and state agencies for future public improvements that will support the development on the Ross or outside. Most of what we're looking at in this process is to support the key ingredient on the Hancock lot side, i.e. construction of a major garage to replace parking that's in the lot currently, and to replace a whole host of infrastructure that lies under that lot and abuts that lot. That is infrastructure that, as Commissioner Raimondi referenced, is kind of an aging, subdrained infrastructure that older cities such as Quincy have that needs to be replaced under any circumstances. But certainly must be replaced if we're to proceed with new development here in the downtown area. So, with that, I will introduce Mr. Seymour for this presentation.
Mr. Mier, before we transition to speakers, I know we had a conversation, I had asked of you to make sure that next Thursday, the 15th, that all the subject matter experts were available, because we will continue this discussion, is that big enough, Mark?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Yes, indeed, when we refer to the development team, we rarely have a team. The team needs no less than within one speed as a group, and of course, the meat throughout. We have our consultants, the wood and current, the designer for parking garage is an organization called Besmin Associates. We have some of the Besmin Associates, of course, we have Mr. Fasson, and we have Mr. Seymour. And the wood and current team consists of a number of people, so we will make them available. Now, I know they may not be available, both of them on the 15th, but any information that you and the members of the council need, we will have access to standards, if you will, we provide that information.
Yeah, but prefer than the 15th.
We will make every effort for them to be.
The outwork, which greatly appreciate, is, to your point, a very substantial conversation. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, good evening. Thanks to be back on you. This is an overview. I have several slides. I would like to provide an overview of the DIF program, where we are today, where we're going with it as the backdrop and foundation for the reorganization request. That's a front of you. A little bit of background here. This different finance program is one of the major, most effective tools that the state allows cities and communities to use for economic development under this smart program, check the board queue, and that's the law. It's being used sparingly, but there has been used, Quincy has many best examples of that in Commonwealth. It is proving itself quite successful in urban goals, not only of the Commonwealth, but of the citizens itself. The DIF program was created by this body back in 2005. 2006 was set as the base year for which the assessments within the DIF district, which you see on your map up there, were set. Fifth, and going back to DIF 101, is a tax increment finance. It captures an increment of the property tax of all the base that's in the set year. And that was fun to come off of that increase in assessment for new investments to be used and reinvested back into economic development projects. When it was set up in fiscal, in fiscal year 2006, the base bound, which totaled 70 in the downtown area of the district, was $427 million. In fiscal year 17, that was $608 million, an increase of $108 million. And within that, $182.93.6 is coming from residential, increase in residential values within this district, and $44 million in the commercial value. In fiscal year 17, the DIF precedent, or the OCA increase, increment of value is about $2.4 million. I'll get back to that in a few minutes here. It enables the city to finance public infrastructure. More importantly, that what it does, cuts that public infrastructure, it can be built and put in place and put it in service. That serves as an incentive for private investors to come in and invest their cash in the real estate market within the city and through the lot. That has certainly happened here, as you've seen, as you're seeing around us, as we're seeing around us today with several projects that have been ongoing. The original streetworks plan, this is a background vision of planning, public infrastructure need of over $300 million. And so, we're not there, but what we're doing, I think, is the money that's being requested, being used very wisely, and it's working. The principal development areas, of course, are the Hancock lot and the Hancock garage areas. And those are chosen because you, as city, are stakeholders, and you own properties, and so, you are part of the development process and are taking that on. Going back a little bit, just the urban renewal process, the DIF is just one piece of the overall urban renewal plan of the downtown, which is going on, and here are, this is some of the public improvements that were estimated for different pieces. It's not additive, it's really mixing mash, because they, there are very things on the, this is the one one. It gives you an order of magnitude for private public improvements that we're talking about, in order to improve downtown. And it's very sensitive, be able to fix some of those very, very old problems and bring the city into it in the future. The public financing that has been used, paid for the hundred of the DIF, the original was $40 million. As you already said, has leveraged more than that about in terms of state and federal grants. And more importantly than that, that total of $90 million has leveraged at least two times, maybe three times that in private investment in the downtown, which we're seeing today in the buildings. The planned public financing is the $80 million request for additional DIF, as well as the preliminary application and approval that is made for the IQD program, which is a state program that captures sales and income taxes, sales and income taxes, to be used again for public infrastructure. There are many projects in downtown that are contributing now, and will be contributing to the DIF program. And you can see in highlighted here in the color, there are many of them, there are. The focus, of course, is on today, particularly is on the Hancock lot, with the O'Connell property, that's now their LVA, R2 and R3 and R4, which are development parcels that, once the garage is completed, will be climbed and ready for the development to take place. There's also the, what's called Gage One parcel, which is the LBC, which is our. There's also the, what's called Gage One parcel, which is the LBC, which is other, subject to the LVA down, and again, coming out of the ground here in the near future. Private place condominiums are coming out of the ground, out of the ground now, one million that got restarted. The gangster lot is almost completed, as I understand. And then the other ones in the downtown, East Chestnut, the Ross Garage subdivision, have a designated developer, Fox Rocks, with a very, very major redevelopment development program that's being formulated today, using a big component of this. And then there's other future development located throughout the DIF area. The Star Market site has been talked about, the NBDA site is being worked now as it goes with state and federal money flow in today. Cannon lots have been built, I mentioned the Sonic Hall is also being talked as a potential redevelopment in the short term. So several projects on which are in process, are thought about or at a point where they start to forecast about the impacts of it today. The current DIF revenues are showing here, just show you an example of how this change is making place. In two thousand and sixteen, there was over two million dollars in DIF revenue last fiscal year. Current fiscal year, two thousand and seventeen, is almost two point five million dollars, an increase of four hundred and sixty eight thousand dollars in new tax revenues that have flown into the DIF fund. Much of that has come from West Chestnut, but as importantly, because of the investments that the city is making down into the downtown, the other ones, the existing apartments, the existing store, pharmacy stores, existing offices, they are increasing the value as people perceive, the market perceives, value that's added in terms of the kind of investments that are being made. And that is going to jump, you're going to see next fiscal year, maybe after that, I'll show you the next slide, you'll see some of that is going to jump as the existing projects are coming online to get new assets. The existing forty million dollar gold bond, which has been put to use, supporting either holding or part of several downtown projects that are listed. Concourse Road, the project probably being one of the things critical of that, the Ross Garage demolition absolutely needed, and again, opening that site up for development. The Avenue Green, transportation projects, subservice, utility gear, all of those very important. And projects that the DIF helped to leverage, the state and the federal dollars as well. The chart there I have, I think, is important to think about. The DIF revenue now is about two point two over two point four million dollars. With projects that we know have been coming out of the ground and will be hitting the natural over the next few years, you'll see that go down to three million dollars and four point six and then seven point five. The line you read there is effectively debt service on the forty million dollars. It's now on anticipation, ultimate interest only, a whole series of pieces. As the bands roll off, the full debt service, the principal interest of forty million comes to bear. And by two thousand and twenty, it's all principal interest, which is a two point four million dollars in outflow from the DIF. But you'll notice by that time, there's seven and a half million dollars in revenue coming in, a surplus after that surplus of five million dollars in four short years. And that is the basis. And it comes from the model that we created in order to forecast, accurately forecast everything that is impossible against. I can't, couldn't show you the model, it's quite complex, it's a spreadsheet based model. These are some of the apps from it. But what we try to do, we simplify it to the point where there's a single interface page where inputs get put into it. The logic of the model, which I've shown here, is the first block is the basic assumptions, the base year data, the second database, third year assessment value, billion taxes, categories. This has all been put together end to end in concert with the city's assessor. And this model is updated each year. When those assessment values change, we update the model automatically to the system. From that, we then look at development programs on parcel by parcel basis, the ones that come before the city, and estimate on that, like the units, square footage, the type of use it might be, and then using assessment factors, again, in concert with the city's assessor, come up with valuations for those. And also look at the phase in the timing of those projects, when they start, how long they're going to be paid to build, will it hit full value, and then moving out over. And lastly, that's a model of tax increment, the actual amount of tax generated from some new investment, and then the bonding and passing that comes off. Key assumptions in the DIF model, it's a buildup model, as I mentioned, it starts with the assessor's database of every parcel that has to be used each year. The parcel sometimes emerge, sometimes it's put apart, change, ownership changes, that all gets incorporated on a direct arm of the assessor database. Assessment values are based on our collective knowledge, information, and historical values that are within the assessor's database on the dollars per square foot for office and retail and commercial, and the dollars per unit for residential. So it's really based upon existing values and projected for inflation rate, using historic inflation rate of three percent every three year, throughout the twenty percent every year. These are variables, though, that can be changed, so that we look at policy implications of some of these projects. The new development, on a parcel by parcel basis, is going to be turned on and off, it can also change in terms of units, square footage, and those kinds of things, because all of these development concepts that are out there are very few, they're all going to change over time, as I said before. And lastly, the internal bond tables, and if you take that excess revenue, DIF revenue, incremental revenue, and you use that to say, how much debt can that support, given the state rules and the regulations on that, and also the constable law council and all that, all that transacts out. Here's just one example of some of the inputs on it. The problem is the inputs, the bonds, if they can help, and how much to afford, some of the basic information that I started here. And then the white blocks there, you'll see that this is just a small sample of all the blocks in the downtown, these are being activated, particular use, like private place, he's got both the residential side and the commercial side, so they're treated separately, square footage, footage is put in, the number of units are calculated, that then translates out into values in today's terms and inflated out in the model over time. So in order to help you realize what the DIF program can do, and to help us size the DIF program that we need, the public infrastructure needs, here's two scenarios that we run into the mark. One is a, I call it, whole builder best case scenario, that takes all the known projects, all the projects that have been, that are in planning or in the purging process, and all of the projects that people have come forward and talked about, usually with planning and with planning department specifically, of being able to speculate on what might happen to these, these lots that are within that DIF area. In that particular circumstance, the total catcher increment will be now at twenty thirty five, which is the end of the actual DIF period, is about two hundred and ten million dollars. DIF revenues, what is the residential and the commercial? The total band, lawn use, that's actually a hyper western, this is in fact a calculation that's in twenty twenty, there are forty plus than eighty. But total net service over that time period is a hundred and seven, over a hundred and seven million dollars. Under that best case scenario, there's excess DIF revenue surplus of a hundred and nine hundred and ten million dollars. Now, the worst case is a little bit different. What that is, is where we make adjustments, we've got the development on the Hancock Lot and selected other developments in the downtown that we are fairly certain, really could be very certain, are coming forward, the smaller ones. It's the worst case because it assumes no other developer takes place. Nothing happens on the cross side of the Hancock Street, the six. And these other ones, speculative ones on the NBDA, we're not including those. So it's really a very conservative, again, worst case scenario. But the important thing is here, there's a net deposit, three point five million after, that pays back the debt. So even if nothing occurs, all of that eighty million dollars is paid back. So that's the graph that we have, is important to leave. Graphically, you'll see this, under the best case scenario, the orange in the barn is the debt service, the green is the total revenue, the blue is the net additional extra increment that's available for back for the general fund or to be used for other projects. Worst case, you see, the blue is positive for a few years and it's negative as the bands roll off and the lawns roll in. But again, there's enough funding there in that debt fund to pay that debt service back for the course of the month. So finally, and you saw in the slide when I presented before, there are risks involved in any kind of public investment program. There's economic risk that the national and regional markets are going, something's been prolonged, a little bit, that's worse than that. The present day of state market is even only going up, going up, going up, going up slowly. There's a lot of people moving, they can't go too much further. That's a risk that's out there. As an economist, I believe the fundamentals are still strong, we still have several more areas of positive economic activity here in New England. But again, that's a risk. There's opportunity, there's a particular developer, and in this case, perhaps that's a big developer decides, or something happens, they pull out, so they slow down a project, they delay a project. But as you've seen, even after Streetworks, other developers are going to be in projects in downtown Quincy. And lastly, there's the interest rate risk, interest rates at all, higher than anticipated, that costs a little bit more, that may reduce the amount of funding that should be paid back. But in conclusion, and you know this, downtown Quincy is going to jump. Success of the recent projects, West Chestnut, and one leading outdoor, but also existing projects that are here, are bringing in more investors, as many people coming in and looking and saying, hey, they now identify Quincy as a place in the business. And part of that, and a bit recent, is the public investment. Private investors don't want to invest all by themselves, they want to see the public in their investment, and that's what they're doing. And that's had several, that has successfully leveraged, they've gone. There is additional fiscal capacity of that in downtown, growth is, you know about, growth that you know is coming, to complete this transformation in downtown into what we want it to be. And it's that new private investments through the DIF program, added catcher value, new value to the investor, that is what's gaining to the public investment system at this stage. Eighty million dollar investors really want to be paid more, pay to go buy for development to take place. I'm now going to turn it over to Chairman.
Craig. May I ask you one question?
You may.
Transition. I'm just curious, I was trying to follow the math of the presentation and see, are you basically create a profile of what the existing debt service on the desk of forty million dollars is like? We're slated to have basically a five million dollar surplus. And then I went to two development scenarios where profiles are requested eighty million dollar DIF ask. Is it possible, I'm trying to figure out, like, what are we all in and what does that have to do with? Like, I'm not going to ask you, you know, produce the model on the spot, but can you show what a hundred and twenty million dollar DIF looks like, anticipated revenue, what that net number would yield? And again, I've structured this meeting to hopefully engage some of these conversations and if there are requests for additional information, that we could connect with subject matter experts and you guys could produce something in between now and the next meeting, but I'd be curious if that, it's digestible to see it here, but I think the rubber really meets the road, we can take the overall aggregate, like, of what you've essentially beyond what we're following, which is dollars went through a hundred and twenty million dollars.
I can do that, Mr. Chairman, maybe for the next meeting, I can actually put the model up, walk through some of the parts that could show you how that hundred and twenty million is covered by the DIF, and based upon, give us that assumption.
It's just the way my brain is wired and all this, how do you manage risk?
I'm happy to, the download model will be as well to.
Sure, I would appreciate that, so.
We take a little longer than you. It may take a little while, it's fairly complex, but we've tried to make it as straightforward as possible, primarily so that the city will have this model to continue to use, it's not a private model, it's an open source, so that you will have it, you can use it and make the adjustments, you have to make, almost on a, you know, a monthly basis.
Sure, I appreciate that, thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
You don't mind me repeating, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have just a few questions after your presentation. Or? Sure, if I may, there's three more presentations, all of which are kind of tied together, and maybe, maybe. Okay, well, I'm happy to. Some of these questions might be answered in the next three. All right, again, I have questions specifically about what you raised, but you can answer those after, so I'm happy to continue. We'll come back to it. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, nice to be here again. I've been asked to give a big picture overview of what's been talked about in downtown area, what this request in context, but what's been talked about for over ten years now. As you know, the Hancock Lot has been part of a larger vision and various redevelopment plans for downtown for a number of years now. And what I'm going to do is quickly walk through, walk through the various plans and how Hancock Lot is going to be key component of all these plans as various versions have come forward over the last ten years. As you know, the Hancock Lot, and as Craig mentioned earlier, along with the Ross Garage Lot, are key city assets as part of the overall downtown redevelopment program. They're city-owned property, they are underutilized, there's a lot of redevelopment potential in those these parcels. So various plans over the years are really focused on what can happen on these parcels to help in the overall downtown revitalization of Quincy, but also help city determine how you can best make use of your assets in this downtown area. The Hancock Lot, one of the things that's been identified for years and staffed, unlocked its full redevelopment potential, requires investment in some structural improvements, which is a lot of what you're hearing tight from Stephen as he goes through the DIF request and the different costs that are associated with this request. And again, it's really opened up the full redevelopment potential of that lot. As many of you may remember, the Hancock Lot was first identified back in the two thousand and six vision plan that was produced for the downtown Quincy. This plan was done by the Fancy Associates. And again, this graphic here shows the Hancock Lot with a redevelopment potential, many of those buildings in, I call that yellow. But also, you'll see a couple of keys there that identify the need for parking as part of the overall redevelopment plan for this area. So you see parking, you see green, green and open space, or to also see a lot of development potential and new building to that area. That was then reflected in the first version of the urban renewal plan that was done in two thousand and seven, again, identifying development potential, mainly focusing on the parcels or the land associated with the Hancock Lot, again, the city on parcels. But again, as you can see, parking garage is central to that redevelopment scheme, redevelopment around it, open space and infrastructure improvements associated with that. Streetworks then came on the scene and they had, they took the city's vision and kind of put their own stamp on it. And again, you can see from these maps, various types of development proposed, and then including the Hancock Lot, and again, including the parking facility as part of that redevelopment. And I'm focusing on the parking because that is the biggest request within this eighty million dollar request that we're talking about tonight. As Streetworks continued to update their plans and refine their development program, again, they continued to keep the same elements on that site. So we see consistency year after year after year, as things have evolved, we're still an insistent approach to the Hancock Lot. When Streetworks was dismissed from the downtown development program, another firm came on board, Redgate, that looked at market conditions and what type of development could be supported in the downtown area. Again, they're looking at the Hancock Lot, and again, very similar, very simplistic at this point, but still identifying the opportunity for redevelopment of the Hancock Lot area, mainly residential use, mixed with some commercial, and again, parking to support those uses. That was again reflected in the most recent updates, the urban renewal plan, number four, recently approved by you, and more of a illustrative depiction of that redevelopment potential. Again, similar elements, green space in that area. This is more refinement of that more earlier concept plan, where now we, as you know, we have some specific development projects that have been approved. Chestnut Place, Nova Residences, other parcels identified for redevelopment, and a more solidified version of what the parking garage, what size parking garage parking garage, what size parking garage you need to support the existing development, supports existing businesses in the area, as well as support future redevelopment on the Hancock lot site. This graphic here, just, and rattle right through this a little more detail, it's more color coded to all the different infrastructure improvements that are needed to open up redevelopment of this lot, again, for projects that already have been approved, and also projects that we see coming down the road. Why should we be aware, during this whole process, there has been a vision of making sure all these separate individual projects tie together, whether it be private investment projects, whether it be a public investment, a large public investment in green space, how do all these elements tie together so that the sum of all the individual projects is of greater value for the city? And this is still evolving, as different projects come online, we update this graphic here, but in the middle there, you can see the parking garage, and this is more to show you kind of the scale and massing of the garage relative to approved and potential projects on the Hancock lot that would be around the garage, is supported by the garage. And just so you know, there's been a kind of a push and pull process here, because the garage is a structure, if it gets higher, the footprint can get smaller, which means there's more land area for green space and development, but if we don't want the garage to be too tall, we push it down, but it's got to go with a bigger footprint to support the same number of parking spaces. So we've been going through that exercise of how tall, short should be, how big, how small should be, the number of parking spaces are going to be below grade, so they won't even be visible to the public, in an attempt to make this garage as tight and compact as possible, but still have a number of spaces that need to support development. And we've also been very aware of visually how is this garage going to tie in with the upcoming development and our vision for this area, and I want to make it clear, this is, the building in the middle here is just a depiction of the massing of the garage, the actual design of the garage is ongoing, there'll be some public meetings about the garage in the next week or two, but this is more to show you that we are aware of the garage, and how it's going to fit into a larger scheme, and again, this pushing and pulling of the massing of the garage to make sure it fits in. So this is the picture, or visualization of the garage from Revere Parkway, oh, Revere Road, I'm sorry, kind of looking towards the Hancock, towards Hancock Street, and this is again, Revere Road, looking in the opposite direction towards Washington Street, and again, the structure in the middle is a depiction of the massing of the garage. Internal to that space, all the redevelopment projects, whether it be Nova Residences, the garage, Chestnut Place, there is, the goal is to create a new civic space there, a public space, and these couple graphics here show you what that space will look like, and how the garage will fit into that. So this is a visualization of what this space would look like if you were exiting Nova Residences into that public space, so the garage will be in the background, and there'll be some version of this pedestrian plaza and green space in that space, between the different buildings and the garage. And then from the other angle, this is from Cottage Street, looking into that same new central civic space there, garage out to the left, there'll be a new public park along Cottage Street that'll lead pedestrians into the space. So again, we're being very conscious and aware of how this garage is going to fit into the larger area, and how all these other public improvements that Rob is going to describe in detail, really open up to this area, not only development, but all these public improvements. So that, I'll turn it over to Rob.
I just want to add this office to the members of the council, that one of the reasons we are here is that the last appropriation that the council granted to the administration was about a year ago, before you were, ended your session last summer, so we could continue with a number of components, and one of the components was the preliminary design of the garage. So what you are seeing is very preliminary, the mayor's been quite adamant that we, the city of Quincy, want to learn from the mistakes of the past, that we don't want a garage that just looks like a garage, we want to anticipate issues that have bedeviled municipal garages, or, we all have municipal garage stories, maybe horror stories, and our approach to this garage is to make every effort to make it not look like a garage, but to look like a building, to fit into the community fabric that's being constructed around the lot. Likewise, with the civic space, the civic space, we want it to be activated, we want it to be a new gathering place, we want it to be a new destination for citizens and visitors to our city, so that there's blanks to be filled in here, both in terms of the facade of the garage, but also the makeup of that civic space, that it will accommodate enlivening activities that will be welcoming, whether it's with street furniture, whether it's with programming, and of course, programming, we believe, will be essential, and tying it in with the atrium that you were made aware of when you reviewed the proposal for Nova Suites Residences, that there is a civic space that will be owned by the city. Of course, there's infrastructure under it, a relocated drainage culvert, but that atrium, that glass atrium, just little elements of glass in the background there, will look out onto this space, and will be a conveyance, a pedestrian conveyance to this space from the Hancock Street. So those are elements I just wanted you to be aware of, and as Chairman has referred to, and as each of you have received from me, I withstand the fact that I made a typo, I conveyed my most recent communication to you on this, that on June fourteenth, we will be holding a public meeting in basement of the building, that's solely directed on these issues with respect to the garage and the civic space, to solicit public input, hopefully with the appropriation, we will be proceeding with the design of the garage and the civic space over the course of the summer and the fall, in hopes that construction on that project will begin in the first quarter of two thousand eighteen. So we wanted to give you this presentation, so you can tie in some of the elements of the project. Of the eighty million dollars, nearly sixty million dollars is forty-three in the case of the garage itself, but this connected tissue to the infrastructure that's below existing buildings, needs to be relocated, it would need to be relocated under any surface, that's the development there, but the aggregation of all of those connecting issues comes up to the most significant percentage of what we're asking you to appropriate, and Mr. Stevens is going to, he's the keeper of the book, he assembled the reports line by line, and he can explain it, so that I'll, Mr. Stevens.